Thank you. So it is Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, 4:30 PM. This is the Committee of the Whole Finance Administration and Communication. All council members other than Councilmember Kritzler, who we expect will be joining us shortly, are present. And we have another full agenda, not that I'm competing with last week's Committee of the Whole, but we want to jump right into it and try to get done in the one hour that we have allotted. So first item, I don't see anybody from staff at the table, but it's approval of a consultant supplement number one with David Evans and Associates for Construction Engineering Support Services for the 156th Cycle Track Project. Are we missing someone?
Hi, Kelly Cochran, interim finance director. So this is a public works item. So John or Erin, are you able to present this item?
We can always move on and come back.
Okay, let's move on and come back. Thank you, Mr. Fields.
So let's move on to item two, which is 2023 City Council Outreach Activities. And we do have staff for this one.
Yes, and I'd be happy to take their time as well. Okay, Jill Smith, Communications, and Jason Brown from the mayor's office as well. And we want to talk about council outreach activities for the year. Have this broken into three topics, so I don't think we'll get through them all in the allotted time. Let's see how we can do. First, kicking it off with Derby Days, which of course, excuse me, is Saturday, July 15th, from 10 to 5 for council's role in the booth. So we've already gained agreement with participating there. Jason has emailed out a schedule and asked for folks to sign up for shift. So thank you if you've done that, and if not yet, please do as soon as possible. And he is also working with commissions to supplement our staffing with one commissioner per shift as well. So that is in the works. The booth is in the same location as you were last year, so you'll be familiar with that. Nice and front and center. And I had proposed to council leadership, and it sounds like they were in agreement, with reusing last year's booth design. So we design and print this large booth and then, you know, use it for a handful of hours for one day. So it was sort of generic enough, and I clipped a picture of that into your memo attachment to refresh memories. So we'll plan to reuse that. That'll save us money and recycle those materials from last year. But the thought was we could update the side panels. That's really easy to do. And so what we were thinking is to build off of the short story that council vice president wrote for the summer focus, which is really about, we want to hear from you. Council wants to hear from you, share your thoughts, come to events, contact us directly with contact information on your webpage, and/or come to council meetings and speak at items from the audience. So kind of playing off that, we thought we could have some prompts where folks could write, maybe on those side panels, about, you know, what do you love about Redmond? What's on your mind? What do you want to see more of? What are you concerned about? And then we'd have that, people could see that information, and then you'd have record keeping of it moving forward of what folks had to say, or, you know, maybe document some of your conversations in a short way. So that was one idea. And then as far as activities, it's always fun to have something for kids to do so you can talk to adults. We had a couple ideas, and I wanted to gain your feedback if we could do that quickly. One idea that we'd seen at another festival was a button maker, which you can purchase for fairly inexpensive, and we could create some Redmond-themed inserts where either kids could color or they're pre-designed, make a button. You could wear it for the day at Derby Days, and about an "I love Derby Days," or "Redmond," or "Biking," or whatever. Another idea, just go a little simpler, same concept, but maybe in the form of a sticker. So that would reduce some of the plastic and such, if that was of interest. And then council vice president suggested maybe the spinning wheel that we had done a few years ago, so you could spin, and it lands on a topic or a prize or something like that. So that's an item that we would look at renting if that was of interest. So, and of course, there are a zillion other ideas. So last year, we went very simple. We had the coloring table for the kids, and it was more just conversational. I do still have a small pile of just Post-it notes where people documented thoughts, so that's really what inspired this idea of writing on the panels or posting ideas or a collection of things you love about Redmond, that kind of thing. So anyway, do you mind just a quick, maybe roundtable of input if you have thoughts on one of those ideas for an activity? Or anything's fine, go for it, that's good too, or one doesn't work for whatever reason?
So you're looking for feedback from council?
Yep.
And I just, you know, this is a fairly informal topic, so I would say raise your hand then.
Thanks so much. And thank you, Jill and Jason, for working on this. I love that we're reusing the materials we already built. Thanks for making it easy to sign up. Jason, really appreciate that. I love the idea of having a kids' activity. Last year, the activity was kind of off to the side of where the council members were, so I don't know if it got used quite as much. I wonder if we just think about the setup inside of the booth to make the activity maybe in front of, or, I don't know, maybe we could just think creatively about that. I trust your judgment entirely.
I'm intrigued because it started inside the booth, so I'm wondering where it went as the day went on, maybe, but so we'll think about the layout.
Yeah, and just like on the topic of reuse, I don't know if we still have those dozens of Zinnia packets, but, or if their shelf life is okay, but that was a cute thing that I know we had some leftover.
Yeah, we definitely, we do have them.
So I would be happy to reuse those as well. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzler, did I see, no? Your hand was not up. Anyone else? Council President Forsythe.
I will weigh in. I like if the seeds are still around and usable. I think that we could just have those there as well, and they could be the growth of a conversation or something like that to tie in with your conversation starter topic ideas. You and I had talked about using those side panels so people can write on it. I think that's great if everyone is good with that. In our conversations, I will share that my temptation was to lean away from the button maker activity because it creates a lot of, generates waste and trash and things that, you know, the kids will wear for the day and maybe take home, and it'll probably end up in the trash. So anything slightly different, I'm a fan of for those two ideas.
Great.
Anyone else? Any comments? Mr. Carson.
So yeah, I think anything that kind of draws people into, I mean, I think we've done a pretty good job in the last few years, kind of getting that conversation going, but, and sometimes it, you know, has to be asked kind of out there, hey, you know, can we answer any questions about things happening in Redmond, or, you know, trying to engage, you know? I don't think we want to be a circus barker, but, you know, at the same time, you know, I think we can be a little bit more forward about getting people to come in.
Getting people in.
And yeah, and I love the seeds. I thought were really cool because people would take them home and did take them home and use them, so, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I wouldn't mind adding that to my resume, circus barker. Councilmember, or Council Vice President Kritzler.
Well, lots of good thoughts here. I guess I'm a little torn because I do agree with some of my fellow council members that we probably want to create less waste, but I will say, kids do really love stickers, so the sticker, and maybe a little bit less waste than the buttons, but anyway. And I think reusing the seed packets, if that's available, is great. The reason I brought up the spinning wheel is that I feel like at events in general, people just love to go spin those wheels, and it really makes them engage. Maybe they could spin, and they would get a packet of seeds or something like that if you wanted to do. I don't know if other people are into the idea of the spinning wheel, but you could even do something, because usually it's like you have to do something to get to spin the wheel, and it could just be like, share your favorite thing about Redmond, so that way it kind of gets the conversation going.
Prompts on there.
Yeah, something like that. Or it could be even we just give away a little candy or something like that if we, but I don't know if others have concern about the waste that would generate, but if we did something that they could use, like eat a candy or something like that, that might be good. And I know people always line up for the spinning wheels at different events.
Okay.
Council President.
I'm also a fan of the wheel. I just have this very vivid memory of talking with Councilmember Anderson before I was on council when they had the wheel, so I'd be interested to know if those that were on council thought that was engaging and fun for folks, but also curious how much it's going to cost us.
That was 2019, and that little graphic on the attachment is from there. So we did have a variety, of course, you can't see it at that scale, but a variety of prompts to talk about.
Councilmember Anderson.
Since you have already volunteered as a circus barker, is that correct? The idea that I honestly had when we were having this conversation was a dunk tank. I don't know if we've looked into that, but I think it would be fun. Stress relief. Thanks.
Well, given the last month, maybe that's not a bad idea. We can use it for our salary, I guess. So keeping in consistent with me as the buzzkill council member and listening to all these fun ideas, and I do like the wheel. I remember the wheel, and I'm a fan of that. I do want to make sure that when we meet with people at the Derby Days, the residents, and we want to capture the questions, and we want to make sure they get answers. So I don't know what, I don't recall how we do that, but will you have that organized so that we, in fact, do get good feedback and that we record the input that we get from residents?
Yeah, we have not done that in the past, at least in the years I've been involved. As far as recording all of the topics or questions that come in and then following up, is that something that you think is lacking? Or are you, for the most part, able to provide either the answers or guide them to where to find the answers?
If what you're suggesting is that council members each use their own method, I'm okay with that. I just was asking, do we have a standardized approach?
If there was some follow-up needed, that we document that, but not that we plan for every, you know, conversation to have follow-up email, but maybe if there's something that's hanging out there that really needs some more investigation, we could document that. I could certainly have pad of paper and, you know, the supplies needed to do that and then plan to follow up after.
For me, at a minimum, you know, when people take the time to talk to council and express their views, I think they deserve to have that remembered and addressed.
Okay. Yeah, we can plan for that. You bet.
Anything else?
I feel like I have enough guidance of sort of understanding what we want to accomplish and what we want to stay away from. Too much waste and not too wild, but enough to draw people in, so we'll work with that. Okay. If you have additional thoughts along the way, let me know. Okay. Topic number two is our new Downtown Redmond Art Walk, or Draw as acronym is. So that is Thursday, August 17th, from 4 to 7 in Downtown Redmond. Now, I have learned some more logistics about this event, which brings me here to ask for your guidance on where you would like to be located. And the two choices are in a 10 by 10 city tent in Downtown Park, which obviously is centrally located, and people would see you as they're walking by, whether they're part of the event or just out and about in downtown. So that's one option, but be aware that apparently there is not a lot of activity programmed in Downtown Park. There will be an information booth and an art installation, but it's fairly limited in Downtown Park. The activities are all happening in businesses throughout downtown, so there'll be a map, and folks will be going from business to business. So the question for council is, do you want to be in a tent in Downtown Park or to be in one of the businesses? As of last week, our art staff let me know that Zeke's was looking for someone to program in their business. And so then you would be in the business on the map in that business, and we would plan some sort of art, performance art or visual art. I'm not sure our art staff would help us with that. I think in Downtown Park, too, we should at least have some art-related activity going on, but first just wanted to find out if there was, you know, really felt one way or the other.
Councilmembers.
I'm going to jump in and say I like the idea of being in Downtown Park because then it has the natural ability for anyone that doesn't know about the Art Walk to flow through, have a conversation with us. We can tell them about it. They can adventure and journey if they want to, or they can just talk to us about the issues on their minds. So it kind of, in my mind, it gets a lot of what we've been talking about accomplished if we're in that Downtown Park space.
Okay. That's two, I see.
Well, I think I, I'm not sure if I have the opposite opinion or a enhanced opinion. Most of the Art Walks that I've attended in various cities, the purpose is for people to not just experience art, but to get to know the city and get to know the businesses as well. And most businesses support Art Walks because it helps them. So the fact that we can integrate with that theme is important to me.
Yep.
So I don't know if that means we don't have somebody in Downtown Park, but I do think that we should consider being in the community.
And it is three hours long, so if you wanted to go all in, you maybe could divide and conquer as in one idea.
Councilmember Anderson.
Is there a way to have something like coupons from the participating business at the table in the middle of the Downtown Park or something like that?
I could add a line. The event planners for the.
So that connects people to the businesses, and they could come see us to go to these, yeah, basically, some benefit.
Mm-hmm.
The scavenger hunt came to mind, but I wasn't sure how that worked.
So you're, it sounds like maybe lean towards being Downtown Park, but have some tie or some role that you're helping to drive people into the businesses.
Having a hard time imagining seven people from council sitting in a pizza place.
Yeah, probably not everyone.
Except eating pizza, of course. Thank you.
That sounds good.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I think one thing about this event, because it is so short, if we're going to do shifts so that we don't end up with a quorum in the booth, I would be interested in having the shifts short enough so that those of us who, you know, do want to be walking through the businesses can also be doing that before and after our turn in the booth, so to speak, to be a presence more out in the participating businesses.
And question for city clerk, have we noticed this as a special meeting? No concerns about quorum, is that right? Okay.
So.
That makes sense, yeah.
So I missed the answer. What did?
No concerns about a quorum. We'll notice it as a special meeting.
Got it. Okay. Councilmember Carson.
Well, I was just going to suggest that instead of noticing it as a special meeting, we could just have two council members in the booth at any one time with a max of three, obviously one shift, but each do one hour, and then, you know, you're free the other two hours to go and participate in the Art Walk, so, because I think that's where you're also going to bump into folks and be able, and, you know, we should all be wearing our badges so that it's clear who we are and even when we're away from the booth, so.
Are you in favor of Downtown Park then, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could probably find someone, well, a better draw for Zeke's than us. I mean, plus, we're going to be kind of transitory if we do what I'm suggesting, so, and I think we should be out and about doing when we're not in the booth, so I like that idea.
Okay.
Council Vice President.
Just a question. Oh, just a question. If we're, so regardless whether we're at Zeke's or Downtown Park, we'd be on the map for the Art Walk?
Yes. Yep, we'll get you on the map. Yep.
Well, then I think even if Downtown Park isn't like the main drag, if it's near all the businesses that are going to be having it, then I think if we're on the map.
Yeah, there's, I understand several businesses along Cleveland there, so we could have you close to them that are participating on. Okay.
Jill, did you get what you needed?
I think I did. I'm sorry that my check marks are all opposite.
There was a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that.
I think so. So it sounds like we'll go with Downtown Park. We'll coordinate with our art staff on that and get back with you to, again, ask you to sign up, and, you know, we'll do that maybe a little after we get through Derby Days, perhaps.
Do you want us to dress in art costumes or anything?
Sure. You bet. Okay. And then time check, would you rather than come back next month to talk about future opportunities? Does that make more sense? Maybe, maybe you can consider this list, which is what I've heard thrown around over the last couple of months, and we can start to narrow that down at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think if you're willing to do that, I think we should do that.
Okay.
I'm going to just go ahead and make that decision.
Okay. That sounds good. Great. Thanks for all your feedback. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So did we fix our technical difficulties? Do we want to go back and capture item one?
It's fixed, yes.
Is it Mr. Churchill? Oh, it is, the technical difficulties are fixed. You're here.
Yeah, that's part of it. Am I on?
No.
So approval of consultant.
Yes, so, yeah, so thank you for getting us on the agenda, and yes, we had, we couldn't hear anything in here, so we couldn't respond. So Aaron Noble is on the call here as well, and he's the project manager on this project, but I can, I can cover this. This is a supplemental agreement for consulting services. This is on our project, the 156th Cycle Track Project, that will be coming to you for award, but we have a process to bring these things through that go to committee and then do it to council, and awards can go right to council. So this is coming now so that it lines up, and they both come to you together on the 5th. So this is just a standard agreement to, for them to support us during construction, so if questions come up and, you know, problems that we need to fix, we have somebody on call who's been involved in the design and can help us deal with those issues. Is there any questions?
Questions from council. Council President Forsythe.
Thanks. Just when reading the memo, there was a, there was a part of this that said it was supposed to have, the contract was supposed to have started in early 2023, and I was just curious if there was something that held it up. I mean, we're halfway through, so just if you could give us a brief update on that.
So where are you, are you looking at?
And the materials that were provided, I don't know if it was in the consultant agreement or in the memo, but my notes from my homework say that, memo says it must be in place prior to the start of construction in early '23, so.
Oh, that construction was going to start in early '23?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Aaron is on the call, and I think he's a better one to answer that. So Aaron, can you?
Oh, now we can't hear him.
No. Okay, so I don't know why it was held up, but it, maybe they had technical difficulties, but, but I know that we are ready to move forward now. It's been out to bid, and we have, it'll be coming to you, and when it comes to you, we can make sure that we include why it might have been delayed.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So.
So I've got a quick follow-up question on that. Thing that caught my eye is it says to date, 99.7% of the design budget has been expended. I don't know what that means. Did we, did we finish design?
Oh, yes. Design is completed.
Complete, 100%.
Yes. So we don't have any, we don't have a lot of leftover money in the design effort, all right? And so we need to do this supplemental agreement for them to work during construction, but they've expended almost all of the design money. And we've been out to bid, we've got bids in, and we will be bringing it on July 5th, so we're ready to start construction.
So there's, okay.
Yeah, we're ready.
So the supplement agreement has nothing to do with finishing design?
Right.
It's only to do project management for the construction phase?
Yes.
Good to know. Thank you. And why was that not bid in the first place? Is that, was that never the intent?
No, typically, we don't, all right? So a lot of times during the design phase, different things will come up, and we'll decide whether we'll need them during construction, or there might be some specific things that change, and sometimes we need actually what we call special inspection or special engineering support. So a lot of times, we wait till the award of contracts before we bring this kind of stuff forward.
Before we decide?
Before we decide to bring, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Oh.
All right. Were there any other council member questions? I see none. So good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
King County Memorandum of Understanding the Opioid Abatement Council. This should be fairly straightforward, right?
I believe that it is, if I can get. Okay. Got it. Yes, it is fairly straightforward. So as council recalls, you approve for us to join the One Washington MOU, which had to do with the settlements of opioid distributors and retailers, that we were to get a part of that settlement money, which we did. Just a reminder, between the two settlements, Redmond will receive about $100,000 a year, a little over. But envisioned in the Washington, One Washington MOU is to create regional opioid abatement councils. And in envisioning that, it means that we cannot spend our money until we are a part.
Check, check, check.
Testing.
Okay, and we're back. Great. So the opioid abatement council is really set up to collect data from the participants. They are charged with doing a dashboard on how people are spending their money. They do not dictate to us how we can. They do not dictate to us how we can spend our money, so that is completely our choice. It's really more of an administrative council. So King County has spun up an opioid abatement council, and this MOU is, I'm asking that it be on the 620 Agenda on Consent so that we can join this abatement council and begin to think about how we're gonna spend our opioid, opioid money. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So just to be clear, our choices are use, join the King County one or establish our own?
Establish our own, right.
And unless we do one of those two things or find a third one, we, we can't do anything, correct?
Correct.
And do you have any information about what it would cost us if we did it on our own? It'd be much greater than 10%? That's a?
Yes, it would be, it would be much more costly than joining King County's.
Okay, I, I just wanted that clear on what we're deciding on. So council members, Mr. Carson, or council member Carson.
Either works, thank you. So my, have, have we talked to other municipalities about, you know, whether there's interest in, in going, starting our own? Because I'm just, I'm super not thrilled with, with King County and how their, their, just their performance, I guess, would be the way to put it. And I'm concerned that, I mean, this is, you know, a fair amount of money, it needs to be spent the right way, and I, I have zero faith that, that joining this, this particular one is the right thing to do. So what can you tell us that makes us maybe think that it's not the worst thing to do?
So the only thing we will be paying King County is an administrative fee, so they will, it's about $10,000, it's based on how much money you get, so we will spend our money the way that we choose to, based on the earmarks of the money. So it will be $10,000 to King County. I do know of one city, and it escapes me who it is, who is spinning up their own opioid abatement council, however, the rest of the 25 cities, not including Seattle and King County, who are also getting money, are going to join with King County. It's just an easier way to go than trying to administer, set up the dashboard, do all the reporting yourself.
Sure. I, I'm just wondering is, so like Pearson, Snohomish County, are they doing similar things?
They are. Envisioned in the Washington, One Washington MOU was that these would be regional councils, not individual city councils.
Sure, sure, I mean, it makes sense to go together, it's, I mean, I think, I think spending it that way is also the right thing to do, but obviously getting together and figuring out some of the right strategies and approaches to, to spend it is, I think, correct, too. I just, I just, I just have my, my hangups. Do we know of other, even if they're not in King County, regional ones that, you know, we might want to, to join instead?
I don't know of any. The only one I know of is that one city who is going to do their own.
They're doing their own, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So just to be clear on council member Carson's concern, and I, I read this and I heard you say it, we're not, we're not working, strategizing or working with them on how we would use this money, it's just that they're handling the paperwork and making sure that we stay consistent with whatever the litigation rules are.
That's correct.
So I don't, I appreciate what you're saying, council member Carson, but I don't think it's a concern.
Well, I think, I think it's that we don't have to do that, I mean, we may choose to go in with other municipalities and do something more regional, even, so this is really reporting structure more than anything.
It is, you know, we could decide that, you know, if Bellevue or Kirkland or somebody approached us and said we won't, as a group, want to do something, we can still do that.
Yeah.
That doesn't, this doesn't preclude us from doing anything like that.
All right, that's more interesting, I mean.
Anything else? Are we good? Is this going on consent?
If, if you approve it, yes, it would go on consent on the 20th.
Any objections to this being on consent on June 20th? I see no objections, I can't see online, but I don't see any, any hands raised online either, so I think we're good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, moving right along. Item four, ah, the 1.1% sales tax for Transportation Benefit District. We've been waiting for this one.
This is not you yet? No, you can come next.
You're welcome.
I'll come back.
Okay. They're excited. We're ready to roll. So, grads, we are kind of at the final step that council needs to take in order to form, assume, and now fund the TBD. I'm here today to ask for your approval to place the final ordinance, which is the sales tax ordinance, on the consent agenda for June 20th. If that ordinance is approved by council, the next steps for us will be filing our paperwork with the Department of Revenue. In order to start collecting in time, we need to file with the state auditor's office, and then internally we'll start working on the development of what's known as a material change policy, as well as sort of a financial forecast and spending plan that we can then bring back to council in the fall.
Comments or questions from council? Council member Anderson.
Do we need to have another public hearing, or is, okay, great, thank you.
That was my question as well. Council member Stewart.
Thank you, I just want to let my colleagues know that my position on the funding of the TBD hasn't changed, so I'll be voting no on this funding mechanism when it comes to the business meeting. Again, very enthusiastic in support of the TBD being funded. I was in favor of the other user fee option because I believed it was more equitable than raising the sales taxes. I'll keep it brief for tonight, but my position has not changed, and I believe the body's familiar with that. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Stewart. So can we put this on new business?
Yes, we can.
I think, any other comments from council? I think with, we don't have consent, so I think it has to go June 20th, new business, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, item five, telec, yeah, telecommunications lease with new singular wireless. Who do we have?
David Amble with Real Property. Yes, this is an amendment to an existing lease with new singular, AKA AT&amp;T. We typically have lease amendments come through if there are substantial changes. In this case, it's really just an equipment swap-out of some equipment that they have up on the water tower at Novelty Hill. We've updated the insurance and indemnification language to meet the insurance, our insurance policies. Bond and security language has been updated, and we've updated the notification section of the lease.
Questions from council members? I think we've seen these kind of things before.
Absolutely, I've got lots of them in my files.
So.
It's gonna be in the consent calendar, hopefully for next week.
Any objections to consent? I see no objections.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. That was easy. Okay, we have another lease amendment, and item six, Northwest Restaurants, Inc., lease amendment. That you guys as well.
Good afternoon, council members, I'm Terry Marpert, Real Property Manager in Finance, and what you have before you is a request for your consideration that we go and, that you authorize the mayor to sign a lease with Northwest Restaurants that operates the KFC franchise in Redmond. And the authorization to do that would be on the June 20th consent agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council members? Council President Forsythe.
So I noticed that this, their lease will expire at the end of this month, are they aware of the increase already?
Yes, I've talked to the vice president at Northwest Restaurants, and he's, he's, that's fine with them.
Okay, that's, that was my only question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council member Carson.
Thank you, so, so we originally bought this with the, when we bought, there's some other property behind it, and, and we don't really love being a landlord, but it's, it's where we're at, right? So, but we had, we had talked, councils at the time talked about that being a gateway property or a gateway to Redmond in some way, and have, has, I mean, I realize that you're really just executing this lease, but you've, you've been here a while, and you remember, I'm sure, us talking about them at, at the time. Do we have, do we really know what we're likely to do with this eventually?
What's going on? Check, check. Here's what we do know, it's on this, the, the connection of 158th to Redmond Way and the rebuilt intersection at Redmond Way is something we want to do. It's Project 119 in the transportation master plan. So it, it's a, it's a longer range project, but it's not yet brought forward to be programmed into the six-year CIP, and to do that, there needs to be some design work done on how all this complicated street system's going to work underneath the trestle area or the RCC, and so the answer to what you're saying is, is also doing that work, but also incorporating a gateway design into whatever we do there, and it's just not, that design work hasn't been done yet, but the idea is still there, and it's in our plans.
Right, so, so this is a two-year lease with then a, was I reading a three-year option?
Three, three one-year options.
Three one-year options.
At the, and the city has discretion if, if.
Got it.
If we come up with ideas for a gateway design, a street connect, reconfigured signal or at Redmond Way, so that it's four-way instead of three, this lease allows the flexibility to do that. It gives us enough time to, it guarantees KFC two years, but it grants us a lot of flexibility with the three one-year extensions.
And if we don't see it in the five-year horizon, then they get, they have a five-year lease effectively?
It could be that way, and that's just exactly what we've done since 2018.
Great, thank you.
No other questions? Consent?
Consent for June 20th? Thank you.
Sure, think we're good?
Great, I, I'm on the other item, too.
Lake Hill Sewer Upgrade Project Utility Easement.
So the King County Sewer Upgrade Project, it's a, it's a large project connecting and building a, a new replacement sewer system from Bellevue, Redmond, up to the wastewater treatment plant, the Bright Water Treatment Plant in Woodenville. The line goes through 4.5 miles of Redmond's, within Redmond, and King County is requesting for a payment to us for an easement, requesting that we grant them an easement so that they can locate part of their line on city property that's located in the central connector. So the request here is to ask that the council put this on the consent agenda for June 20th, and to authorize the mayor to sign the easement so that we can grant that to King County, and they can build their sewer line, I hope, soon, in 2024.
Questions? Council member Anderson.
Is there anything particularly unusual about this request, or just a standard operating procedure here?
It's, it's standard operating procedure, and we happen to own a kind of a rectangular parcel that's in an unusual location that just happens to be right where they want to put the sewer line.
When did we purchase that property?
I, I don't know, but I will let you know, I can find out.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Council President Forsythe.
All the value estimations look like they were done in 2021, is that gonna be updated, or are those the numbers we're going with?
I, I, thank you for asking, that's a good question. Usually we do, we want our appraisals to be within a year or six months. Given that the value of the property, and I looked at it, its value on the King County Assessor website, it hasn't changed over the last two years, so I didn't think, I don't think that we're going to get something like another $500, even if it did, it's been, it's just stable, so I think that's a good indicator to say that the appraisal is fine for this purpose.
Yeah, it's a pretty funky little.
Check, check.
Triangle there.
It's really unusual.
Personally on the trail and mostly in the water, so I'm not surprised by your answer.
That's right, it's really strange.
It is.
Thank you.
Council member Critzer. Council Vice President Critzer.
This might be too adjacent to the issue, but I am curious, just in terms of the actual construction of this project, I know that it's gonna be somewhat disruptive to the community that like to be able to use, especially the Snohomish River Trail, and just curious if you have any insight into the phasing that is gonna go on, as well as any other communication with the public on this? I'm not opposed to us granting this easement, but I do think that it is gonna be a big impact for the public while they're doing this project.
I, I don't know the phasing. I do know, though, and this has been consistent in the staff discussions between myself and King County and other staff with King County, is that the importance of a viable alternative route should some parts of the trail be blocked, is, it's really critical, it's important to us, and it's not that you go five miles out of the way or three, you know, hundreds of feet, but it's a nearby workable alternative connection, so I, I can find that out and let you know the phasing.
Thank you, and I think just overall the communications to the public about both how they are going to be able to get around these different spaces, and then I think, oh, you got louder, and then also the, the path that they're going to be taking to ensure that there, that there isn't significant environmental impact.
Yeah, right.
Since obviously they're doing this project near a really sensitive area.
Yes, I will, and I will find out, and get back to you.
Mr. Carson.
Real quick, just to add on to council member Anderson's question about the property, also the purpose that we bought it for, not just, I mean, when is interesting, but did we buy it for some, we must have bought it for some reason, so.
That'll be part of my report.
Perfect, thanks.
Sure. So I've got a question that actually adds on to council vice president Critzer's concern. I was gonna ask the same question, but with a little bit extra. Do we have any control when we do this easement agreement on narrowing down that schedule? I, I have to think that it would be important to the city with everything that's going on, and I know that we're having construction fatigue out there, you know, narrowing down the timing of when this work would be done in granting the easement, I think, would be helpful for the city and the residents. Is there any possibility that, that that can be negotiated?
I, I think as part of looking at, talking to King County about the phasing plan, that your question will be answered, we'll get some information about what that's, what's going on there, but I can also talk and see if there is a possibility that they can do this work in a shorter period of time.
Public Works does have a project manager that is assigned to working with King County on this project, and I'll ask that someone provide you with an update on specifically what we know about the project timelines, areas they're working in, things like that.
Yeah, what I Yeah, what I want to know is can we actually include it in the agreement that there is some narrowing down of the timeframe? And we can put this on consent if there's no objections, but I would like to know that prior to the June 20th meeting. So, Council Member Forsythe.
Since, since we're bringing up all the things about the timeline on this project and how we're going to hear back about it, I had heard a rumor that the staging for this project was going to happen where the pop-up dog park is currently, and I'm interested to hear when you come back if that's still the plan. That's a very popular use area in the summer months and even in the winter months. So just if you could let us know what the current plan is for that and if there are any alternatives.
Okay, I will.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So was I wrong, this is not going on consent?
Well, it could go on consent with a response in the, in the staff memo to you. And if you so choose, you could put it off the agenda.
Are we good with that, council? I see yes.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that brings us to item eight, which is our last item. The adoption, what is going on with these microphones?
They're working.
Yeah, working on steroids. Thank you, Chip. Adoption ordinance establishing an optional pilot program for the 12-year multifamily housing property tax exemption. This was sort of rushed onto our agenda at the last minute because there's a timing issue, and I will go ahead and let staff present.
Thank you, Council Member Fields. Sarah Fialan, Deputy Director for Planning and Community Development. This item will be presented by Ian Lefcourt, our Senior Planner, who served as Project Lead. As a bit of background, this ordinance is one of the deliverables for an ongoing consultant work related to the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant. The due date for the deliverables for the Department of Commerce Happy Grant is at the end of this month. If we miss this due date, the city will forfeit the Commerce reimbursement of $10,000. If Commerce is grant, the Commerce Grants Short Timeline, the robust feasibility analysis and the involved stakeholder participation all contributed to this tight adoption request. And I understand you might have follow-up questions about that and we'll answer those. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ian.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ian Lefcourt. I use he/him pronouns and I'm the Senior Planner. The item before us is the adoption of a temporary, temporary pilot program for our MFT-E regulations, specifically the 12-year. The request in front of council is to put this item on the consent agenda for the June 20th for the timeline concerns that we've just discussed. For a little bit of a background on this project, this is one piece of the consultant work on the Happy Grant. The other components that will be coming forward with the housing element right around June to planning commission, not to council, will touch on the mandatory inclusionary zoning and the eight-year MFT-E program. But right now, the item in front of you is just a temporary pilot program for the 12-year amendment. The other components are still going a little bit, going through a little bit more analysis and stakeholder engagement. And the last piece of information is that there's not really a foreseeable concern with this item because it's lessening the burden on developers. If it succeeds, it will increase the supply of affordable housing, and currently there's essentially zero market rate participation in the 12-year program. So for all these reasons, we think that it's suitable for a pilot program process. And with that, we welcome any questions.
Questions from council. Council Vice President Kritzer.
In, in looking at this, you mentioned that there was some robust additional information in terms of the outreach and some of those other pieces, whether we could get access to that, because I think attached, we only had the, the memo and the ordinance. So I would be interested in seeing that before voting on this. One question that I'd love you to answer in this meeting is, so the goal is to be able to create affordable housing, but the range that, that the pilot would allow would be above 100, allow for up to above 100%. So can you speak to that since I could see that we might in the end make the trade that, that you do with MFT-E and then get above 100% housing created rather than affordable below 100% housing?
Absolutely, and we will get you the report and I'm happy to walk us through the financial model. That is, that is a lot of content, so it's probably better as a, as a call than an attachment, but I'm happy to help however we can on that topic. In terms of the AMI levels, that is a great question. As we recall, the main area that the King County countywide planning policies identified for the city of Redmond's housing need is at the lower levels of affordability, 50% below. The reason we're exploring these specific AMIs is because they are the ceiling that state statute allows for the 12-year program. Because we've had such minimal interest in the 12-year program, we're kind of using this as a parameter to say, well, this is as lenient as we could make it. So if there's still no participation, that implies that the 12-year program for the market conditions currently in Redmond are not possible within the statute. So that could lead to us providing more feedback to the state in terms of the MFT-E program. And we are excited to see if there's an increase possible for affordable housing.
Ian, let me jump in really quick, just to be clear, there's been zero participation for this current MFT-E, and the reason why you also don't have all those other documentations is because we're kind of bifurcating this so we can capture that $10,000 from Commerce. Ideally, we, and we negotiated a lot with them to try and come and bring it all as a whole package, but because of their deadlines, we weren't able to. And so we said, you know, if we come with this part, which is something we are contemplating anyways, which is a, a way of doing a pilot project, you know, then we'd be able to see whether that would work or not because we already know the current landscape is not working. So just to help clear up some of that as well.
Just a quick follow-up question on this. So I guess to, to be clear, why isn't, why isn't the suggested limits between 80 to 100, I guess, because you could go up to 115 is the point? Did we consider that, just doing between 80 to 100 or?
We did, we considered trying to ballpark a little bit closer to what we thought the market might be, but because there's so much stakeholder input that the quantity of units is just too onerous from our development stakeholders, we thought we would just go straight to the bookend because it was probably in the same realm anyway. So now if we have this data point, we can reevaluate at the end of 2024.
And I'll also add that we're required to build at that level based on the needs assessment as well.
Council Member Stewart.
Thank you. I think this topic is really hard for the general public to follow along with because there's so many acronyms and all of that. And this is a piece of a bucket of solutions that may come forward. So I'm wondering, Ian, if you could help us understand, at the end of the pilot, what might be the two or three possible outcomes that we could end up with? Like success might look like this and failure might look like this and something in the middle might look like this. Is that a story you can tell to us?
Absolutely. The main success in terms of the process will just be that information, right? And development takes years to do, but we'll get pretty good data by the end of the termination just because we'll know how many applications came in for the 12-year.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but when you say data, do you mean housing units that could come online within that program?
Precisely.
So adding to our supply here in the city?
Yes. And so ideally, we would be able to find the optimum amount to get the deepest levels of affordability while still generating that 20% of affordable units per every development. But it may not be that, in which case there's a discussion to be had about, well, how are we valuing the different AMI levels in terms of meeting our needs? But success will look like acquiring more information so that we can create a better program for our community.
So I got a couple of questions. Based on what I know today, I'm not likely to vote for this. And I'm going to lay out why, and if you can answer some of the questions, that'd be helpful. What does it cost us in foregoed revenue when we do a 12-year exemption? What do we not get?
I do not have any specific summary values for that. More than happy to get it for you as best I can.
You may have six other votes, but you won't have mine unless I have that. The other question I have is, it says the eight-year program has been very successful. As of the first quarter of 2023, there are five constructed and occupied market rate projects adding 135 affordable units. How do we know that that is very successful? I think this program has been since 2017. Do we have some peer comparisons or how, how do we know that that was as successful as we think? And, and I would actually have the same question. What did that cost us in tax exemption revenue and what did we get for it?
In terms of measuring success, all but one market rate project that has been eligible for the MFT-E has chosen to pursue the eight-year MFT-E. Now, part of that is because of our mandatory inclusionary zoning, so going that little bit deeper of affordability is generally worth the tax exemption. And for those specific tax exemption numbers, I will research and get them as fast as I can for you.
We can provide the tax revenue in the next memo as well.
Okay. You know, my, my concern is we're not creating affordable housing, we're creating less expensive housing, and we're not really hitting the target of the people who need, who we expect or we tell ourselves that we're helping. So what, my concern is that we're, we're not, we're not creating the benefit that we hope to, and it's costing us more than we think. And if somehow you can provide me some information on that, that would be amazingly helpful for me.
Council Member Fields, we could also provide you with the needs assessment slide that shows at what levels of affordability we're going to be shooting towards. So you're correct, I mean, at, at some levels, like what we're talking about, it might not be the deepest of affordability, which is what we need the most, but it's something. And so we need that at each one of those levels.
And, and I get that, but what I recall from a few months ago, and maybe I'll dig that report out, is that we were doing pretty good with the 80%, but we were struggling with the others. So here we are, not solving that problem, we're solving a problem that's actually, we're already doing okay on. So that therein lies my concern.
I hear what you're saying, and we need all pieces of the puzzle. So this is just one we're bringing forward today.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Council President Forsythe.
Thank you, and I appreciate the conversation from my fellow council members. Couple of quick questions. I've heard the pilot program would end at the end of 2024, and would it start as soon as we open up this ordinance or would it start at the beginning of 2024? Is it an 18-month or a 12-month?
It would start shortly after the ordinance is adopted.
Okay, with that five-year, five-day or 12, two-week grace period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I'm, I'm also interested in the, the tax assessment and information, and I was really interested in the conversation around modifying the levels as Council Vice President Kritzer had brought up. So more information in the memo that you bring forward around why this, this option, because I think, I think we're all struggling with this because we know how much affordable housing we need to have and how much study needs to go into this and questions of where this could be, is this going to be around light rail and all of the questions that we've all been talking about so much. I think that it's hard for us to, to move this quickly even though we know you're under the time crunch. So as much information I think as you can provide would be helpful because otherwise I think we're all going to struggle with it a bit.
Yep, that's understandable, and I'll just say we'll do our best to get all the information to you and we'll try and figure out which council date that would be. We would, in order to, the reason why we're pushing this would be to complete it by the end of this month, and if we can't do that, then maybe we'll just bring it back to you as part of the full package and forego the $10,000.
Yeah, and I, no? Oh, Council Vice President.
Yeah, I was, I was going to agree. I do feel I don't want to miss out on any sort of money revenue we can get for, for the city, but at the same time, I do want to be thoughtful about this, this decision and make sure, and I know you will have put a lot of research into it, which is why I brought up, if, you know, we could get some documentation on that. One question that I was wondering, you mentioned about like the applications to be able to use this. Can you explain a little bit more about that process? So let's say in, during the pilot timeline, X number of projects decide, you know, five projects decide that they wanted to try to use this. What is the process in which they are chosen or not chosen to apply it?
The application is fairly straightforward. They have to vary detail, they have to provide a lot of detail about how the affordable units are going to be located in the site, and they have to agree to meet certain conditions. But essentially, the MFT-E application just says, the developer agrees to this, the city has accepted it and recognizes the review has been accurate. And at that point, there are a bunch of administrative steps, but typically speaking, the developers who work with us on the MFT-E applications are coming in good faith, and so we seldom have to reject any application. There's usually a way to get to yes.
So if we had a lot that wanted to take this up, they, most of them would be able to do so if they wanted to? Not to say that, that, that will happen since obviously so far the 12-years at zero, but if you, this pilot were wildly successful.
Precisely. The requirements for the 12-year application are the exact same as the eight-year in terms of application, the forms they need to provide and things like that. So the, the only difference is how many affordable units they're providing and at what levels.
Okay, and then, sorry, last question on this is, just in, is the affordability, the number of affordable units, is that on top of our inclusionary zoning or that is like that first 10%? Is that the same as our inclusionary zoning?
That is a great question. The MFT-E is designed so that fulfilling it fulfills the inclusionary zoning requirement. So it will still be a total of 20% affordable units in the MFT-E, it will not be 20 plus 10 from the IZ. Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not in addition, it helps them get to it, to help make the project feasible.
Help make the project, so it's basically incentivizing the project to happen, which otherwise might not happen because otherwise, I guess
We get nothing.
We're basically giving them an exemption to do something that they're already required to do.
Right. The MFT-E typically requires a little bit deeper levels of affordability and/or more units than the inclusionary zoning requires.
Yeah, okay. I, I have to say, I'm still a little on the fence about this and
Yeah, and to be clear again, this is our creative attempt. We were like, oh man, staring down this deadline, instead of trying to force this public process, and we knew that if, you know, if we were to bring to you the whole package without having, again, gone back to our stakeholders we've been engaging over the last couple of months, that that wouldn't go over well either. So we thought that it was more important to take the time with the meat of the package with our stakeholders and bring that to you in the full, but this was our creative idea being like, we know they'd be okay with, because no one's been taking advantage of this program here, so maybe we can try this thing, but totally understand if you all are reticent to it as well.
So how can we help sort of meet the goals here of getting enough information so that we can make a decision, but also at least make a good attempt to meet your deadline or our deadline? Do we need to put this on new business for a business meeting? Can you, I, I don't remember, it seems to me like it's the end of the month, is your
Correct, we would need it to go on consent on, wow, the June is flying by.
So.
Yes, so let me, let me brainstorm and think about that one, but what I'm hearing that you need is the updates on the foregone revenue. Oh, we don't need it on consent, said Jeff. We just need it on the agenda. Okay, great.
So I'll let you work that out with
Yep.
Council leadership. One last question, and it's just a curiosity. So in, in the restaurant business, or any business really, introduction of a product is oftentimes thought through because it may impact the sales of an existing product. Do we have any of that kind of conflict with the eight-year and 12-year? In other words, worst case, if we didn't have the eight-year program, would the 12-year program be suddenly popular? Is, do we have any data or information on a concept like that?
That could be a consideration, where if one is sufficiently more valuable than the other, we could see a bunch of opportunities flow that way. Our initial discussions from our stakeholders lead us to believe that's likely not the case with this. But until it gets out in the real world with all the changing development considerations, it's hard to say.
Got it, okay, great. Well, Councilmember Anderson.
One question that always sticks with me on the MFTE concept is how does it benefit the tenant that is living in the unit? So if there's a way that you can add that detail, I appreciate the tax question as well as that, but that's the, the impact of MFTA on the individual in the unit. I would like to know what that is, and if that is possible by next week, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I think we all recognize the challenge here, and we do appreciate the work that you've done and bringing this to us. Deadlines are deadlines, so. Any more council input questions? I don't see any, you know what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are done with our agenda and we are adjourned, thank you.